Welcome, everyone, to the Town of Eastchester Planning Board Meeting of Thursday, October 28th, 2021. Pledge allegiance, everyone.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, let's do the roll call. I'm Phil Nemec. I'm acting as the chairman today in the absence of James Bonanno, who will not be here today. Mark Cunningham.
Present.
Louis Campana.
Present.
All right. Next item is the approval of the minutes of three, the three most recent meetings of the planning board, May 27th of 2021, June 24th, 2021, and July 20th of 2021. I know I've provided comments and revisions for each of those. So, not hearing anything from either my two colleagues, I'm going to move to approve all three of those minutes, subject to revisions that have been provided to Margaret to pass on to the, to the court reporter or the transcriber.
Second.
Oh, in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, we have three items on the agenda today. They are, and they will be heard in this order. First, application 21-29, 102 Lee Avenue subdivision. The second item is 21-30 Duncan at 1 Michael Frey Drive, also known as 38A Mill Road, just behind us here. And the third item of business is application 21-31, which is 2 Eastway. So if you're here for anything else, it is not on the agenda. So without any further ado, let's go to the first item, 21-29, which is 102 Lee Avenue, and it is subdivision.
My name is Tom Avilama, architect for 102 Lee Avenue. I'd like to show you also, this is Amol. He's going to be working on the project.
Hello, good evening, everyone. My name is Amol Vergis, and I work with Tom Avilama Sanos. The project, the proposed project is in Lee Avenue, Eastchester, comprised of minor subdivision of existing four lots of 25 by 100, which equals 10,000 square feet. The zone is in R5 residential district. The lot will be then subdivided into two, which will be 50 by 100, which is the requirement of R5 zone. The maximum coverage on this lot will be, for each lot, 50 by 100 will be 31.5 percentage, which is 1575 square feet, and the maximum floor area will be 2,300 square feet. In these two lots, we will be proposing, we are proposing one-family residence, which will have the floor area of 2245 square feet and 2275 square feet. And the lot coverage will be 26% in Lot 1, which will be around 13, 13 square feet, and in the Lot 2, it will be around 1275 square feet.
Can I, can you clarify for me, when you say Lot 1 and Lot 2, there's...
Sure.
As you look at 102, which, which one will be the Lot 1? Is the one on the left? So the, the one where the, that existing...
House.
Building is?
Yes.
That's Lot 1?
That's Lot 1.
The, the lot that is vacant right now...
Which is vacant, that is Lot 2.
Is Lot 2? Okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
And then we have worked with the engineer for the stormwater management. So I will ask Mr... To talk about...
Paul Bertay from ARQ PC. We designed the site to mitigate the 100-year storm event. We analyzed the site as if there were no impervious surfaces on the lot, and we've collected all of the runoff from the driveway and the roof leaders to subsurface infiltration systems. In August, we did deep hole and percolation tests to find that we have deep well-draining soils. We did four tests, in the, two in the back, two in the front. Some of the perks were really fast, which is good, means the water will go down fast. The design uses the conservative, the conservative values that we found, so that we mitigate the 100-year storm, which, after this, because we've designed it without considering the existing imperviouses, we would reduce the runoff from what there is today.
Was Ida a 100-year storm?
Ida was about 100-year. I mean, the intensity.
Okay. And Sandy before it, about eight years ago?
Yeah, I think it was a little bit less, but the intensities are always what gets us in these storms.
Yeah, yes.
So, one of the things that we did for the design is, with the driveway down below, we have designed an overflow system, so that if you do get a heavy rainfall event, we designed a sump pump system in conjunction with the footing drains to pump it out to the drywall in the front yard.
And that's on Lot 1?
Both, very similar, yeah. We've got a trench drain at the bottom of the driveway, manhole, and we've got it, the system set up, so that if it exceeds the capacity of the drywall, which is designed for the 100-year storm, we actually put enough drywells in there, so that it all infiltrates. But if, for some reason, we get a heavier storm event than that, the house will be, will have an overflow with a sump pump to mechanically remove it from the...
Did you say you had footing drains too?
Footing drains too. I mean, we're, because it's well-draining, I wouldn't expect there to be groundwater during normal events without any rain, or even if there is a rain event. But if there is a significant rain event, we will tie a footing drain into a sump pump, which will be pumped up to the drywall system.
Okay. Okay. And have, do you know whether, Joe Tramelli, has he received a copy of a report of...
Yes, so I spoke to Joe Tramelli this morning. He's been in close communication with the applicant's engineer. In my meeting notes, I indicated we also met with the applicant's entire team, including the engineer and Joe Tramelli, on October 14th. Joe did receive the latest plans. He didn't have time to put together a memo for the board. There's still things that need to be tweaked, but he said, you know, he can confirm that it, it will work. And then, as you know, when they come for planning board approval for the individual single-family homes, you know, those plans will be even more detailed. But yes, he did review it. I spoke with him today, and he was fine with it.
You've mentioned the quality of the soil in the two locations, the two plots, generally being, you know, fairly quick draining, if you will.
Yeah.
Not, not being problematic. Do you know whether there are any issues with, with groundwater retention, with flooding, if you will, right now?
I, I don't, but knowing that these soils are of a sandy nature, even when you dug down deep, one hole was down at eight, nine feet, one was down at six feet, just limited by the machine that we had that day, to how deep we got, but we didn't hit any confining soils, no rock, and we didn't have any groundwater enter the holes when we were there. But, you know, I, that's all I can speak of, what we did for that soil test. I don't have any other data that would contradict that.
Okay. Gentlemen? Anyone?
No.
Okay. All right.
I do have one, just one quick question. This is, this will be further developed, but sil- erosion control measures, those would be included on this when it returns?
Yes, so right now, they're simply proposing a...
Just a sketch.
The division line. Yeah, it's a, so that, so that they'll have two legal building lots.
Right.
And then, they've actually, assuming that they'll get planning board approval, or as soon as they get planning board approval, they've already prepared the drawings for the individual single-family homes.
They'll make a review at that time?
Yes, yes. So this is simply two building lots, and we do like to confirm that before you approve two legal building lots, we always like to confirm that the drainage can work. The other details, architectural details and things can be worked out during the ARB approval process.
One question I do have about impervious surfaces. Obviously, there's a structure on the, on Lot 1 right now, and there's a driveway, I think, to the left of the...
Yeah.
...building. So there is some impervious surface there right now.
Sure.
It strikes me that, you know, just, you know, I don't think I have a calculation of what's there now, compared to what would be there under the proposed buildings of two single-family residences. Do you know what the approximate increase, assuming it's an increase in the impervious surfaces, would be?
If you gave me a minute, I could, I could answer that, but...
Is it less than double?
It's less than double, yeah. The driveway, there's a separate garage right now, there's the house, that's about, it's a little bit bigger than, the footprint's a little bit bigger, so it's less than, there's a patio on the other side that...
Yeah.
So, yeah.
So we would be unquestionably increasing the impervious surface, but it would not be doubling it?
Not doubling.
And, and because of all the measures that you'd be taking, you'd be retaining...
Right.
Much of that in it.
Yeah.
Right. I assume that there's no drywells. I couldn't tell what's there now, but I believe everything that's coming off the roof right now, or in the driveway, is just going out into the street, where now, we're picking it up, putting it back in the ground, and then just the overflow is going out to the street.
And both, and both houses will have the separate systems?
Yes.
Yeah, we've got separate systems in the back, because we kind of spread it around. I originally had the driveway in the back, but we pulled it to the front. So we, those are the kind of tweaks that we did, that, you know, Joe just saw a couple of line, you know, sewer, where the sewer's going, where the water's going, but we have room to fit everything into the, into the house from the street. Sewer's low enough, so that the sewer invert is below the basement, so if there is a bathroom in the basement, that wouldn't be a, wouldn't be an issue, wouldn't need a pump. The only thing that we'd need to pump is the footing drain, which is typical in, in any construction that's below grade, and you don't have daylight.
When we open a public hearing, you can, you can speak. We'll open a public hearing.
Sir, you have to wait until recognized. You have to wait. Yeah. Yeah, we're not there yet. Although I think we may be in a moment.
We're gonna be...
Any other questions?
No, I don't, I'm...
No questions here.
All right, so I think now we...
No, you can do that, yeah.
I'm going to make a motion to open the public hearing on application 21-29, 102 Lee Avenue subdivision.
Second.
Oh, in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Are there any members of the public who wish to comment on this application?
You, you can come up to the mic, just introduce yourself and...
You have to give your name and address, please.
Thank you. My name is Kevin. I'm from 97 Lee, the neighbors cross 102. First of all, I'd like to appreciate the, the board members holding the hearing today.
I'm sorry, Kevin, what's your last name?
Kevin, Kevin Chen.
Chen, thank you.
Yeah, 97 Lee.
Yes.
Appreciate the board holding the hearing today to give the public, the neighbors, an opportunity to express our big concerns on the safety side. And I also like to thank my great Yulian. We have multiple email communications. She really appreciate her to share the informations and provide the detailed explanations on the 102 plan.
And, and Mr. Chen, just, just, you can rest assured that, that Margaret has disseminated to the members of this board, the communication, even the email that you sent earlier today.
Yeah.
So we, I know I have had a chance to review it.
Yeah.
I'm familiar with it, but, but since this is a public hearing...
Yeah.
Why don't you go ahead and voice what concerns you have?
Yeah.
We will listen, and we may have questions for you.
Understood.
Maybe there are other members of the public who, who may want to comment on your comments.
Yeah, sure.
So go ahead.
Yeah, thanks. Thanks, Chairman. Back on the case on 102, we, as neighbors, object to these substitutions. I have two reasons. First is safety. By looking at their original plan, you see, I 97 is across these 102 new proposal. The second one, the driveway, is facing my house directly, which means if the car in the driveway lost control, they will hit my car, they will back, hit my buildings. And my daughter usually play out from yard. This is, the driveway is a huge risk for my properties and for my family life safeties. The second reason I also mention is safety. And, you know, there's a lot of young kids live nearby, and 102, their school bus just right on the corners. And you could see from these pictures I took from last week, the applicants, the builders already started to do deconstruction, preparing for demolitions. And I saw the large saw, and I see the smoke, and I heard a large noise. My daughter come ask me, "Hey, Dad, what they doing?" I told her very seriously, I say, "They are do the construction work. Be very serious, don't go, even go there, it's very dangerous." I'm pretty sure the workers are professional, they have safety gardens, they have the gloves to protect their hands, they have the glasses to protect their eyes, but how about the safety for the neighbors? I want to make sure the neighbors are aware of that, but I feel that it's really missing communications. Our neighbors never know about this. The parents don't know about the plan until we find out ourselves. And our kids are so curious about the world, and they will, they, they just walk around. They are so vulnerable if the safety code is applied, I'll be make sure on this implied on that. To be honest, I feel like constructors don't, the applicants don't care about our neighbors, and looking how they rushing to prepare the demolition, they try to get a walk down, and sounds like they only care about make the huge profit with actual building, and they just walk away. That's how I feel. As neighbors, we suffer all the bad consequences of that. And so that's the main reasons I object for today's proposal. And to be honest, and again, we are not here objection for objection, we come here for communications. I feel like there should be better communications between the constructor, the, the designer with our neighbors to address our concern. And also, I want to highlight, like, I think there's a missing comparisons analysis between one building and two buildings. The key thing is like, how many times would cost if you build one building, and how many times would cost to build two buildings? We, our neighbors are not professional, but we like to at least have some ideas on very high level. So, which means, does the plan, they try to build one building, and after that, they sell the building, build a second one, the project be two, three years? Or it's like, build two buildings simultaneously? I feel like the applicant, they should do more homework, they should go back, address our safety concerns, maybe should do the pressure arrays for us, so our neighbors will be, feel comfortable and feel safety on their project. That's all I have. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. I do want to emphasize one thing for you. Right, the, the application that is before us today is an application for a subdivision.
Yeah, understood.
So it's, and, and this is an oversized property right now. It's, it's big enough to, it's as big as two normal-sized properties on Lee Avenue. And so what we are, are considering today, the application we're considering, is to subdivide that single property into two.
Understood.
Which can legally be, legally be done. What we have, in, in recent years, required of an applicant, because we understand fully what's going to happen after the subdivision, it, it's being subdivided, so a second home can be built. That's, that's almost invariably why there would be a subdivision.
Understood.
But what, we are not considering, while, while we are aware of the plan, and we're, we're looking into the plan, and it's fully out there, that there, that the ultimate plan is to build two homes, where there is right now only one, that, that's also a separate process. They will, if the applicant gets the subdivision, they're going to have to come back here.
Understood.
They're going to have to go, I, I don't know that they're seeking any, any zoning variances.
No, not.
I don't think there are any. But they, they will have to come before this board, and they will have to go before the Architectural Review Board, which is a separate board, a very capable one.
Wouldn't see...
And, and they meet, I think, on the first Thursday of, of the month.
Yeah.
And, and the Architectural Review Board addresses issues, you know, principally relating to the design of the property, the landscaping, landscape architecture, lighting, a number of those issues. This board is the board that's principally concerned with, with safety.
Understood.
Yeah. So there, it's, so, so, well, we appreciate your concerns about, you know, what, what buildings might be built, and, and how they might be built, and what timeframe they might be built. It sounds to me that those are questions that are probably more appropriately addressed at some future meeting, where the applicant will have to come before us with a more refined plan, if they do want to go ahead and build these two structures that are, that they're contemplating now. But, but the, but certain of the issues that you've, you've raised are certainly appropriate for us to address, and we will, we will have the, the applicant respond to certain of your concerns, but let's first hear if there are any other comments from the public.
Oh, appreciate.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Certainly.
Thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. My name's Peter Telesco. My parents, Peter and Elizabeth, live at 94 Lee, and my mom doesn't like to come speak in public, so she asked me to represent her tonight. I appreciate your clarification that we're not actually going to be discussing the proposed homes. I was ready to, to speak about that. So I will just backtrack to the one item that this gentleman was bringing up, the water. My parents moved into that house in 1965. To my knowledge, they're the second longest-tenured people on the block, so they know how the block works, how things are, what happens, what doesn't happen. I can give you a little bit of history about water.
Did you grow up on that block?
I did. I grew up there. I lived there until I got married.
Are you an Eastchester resident, or, or no?
I am a resident now, yes. I live at 892 Post Road. I'm sorry, I didn't say that.
Perfect, yeah.
Yes.
We're going to let you speak anyhow, but I...
Okay.
The fact that you're paying taxes.
How far up the hill is it from Scarsill Road?
Uh, the second block.
Second block.
It's the second block.
So it's quite a ways up the hill.
So it's between Elida and Ewerd.
Okay.
All right. So I, I want to say about 15 years ago, the prior owner of the property was having an issue with water in his basement, and what he did was, he disconnected the leader coming down from the roof. I don't know where it went. I don't know if it went into a drywall, if it was just draining there, and he extended a pipe all the way across his side yard, which is the vacant lot that's being proposed to subdivide, and he put it about 15 feet from the property line, which is about 30 feet from my parents' home. Lo and behold, my parents had water in the basement, and they never had water in the basement prior, they haven't had water in the basement since. My, you know, they went and knocked on the door and said, "You can't do this. We're getting, we're getting water now." So he did remove it, but just to the point, that water can be an issue there. The, the properties are on a hill, water's going to come down, so if it is subdivided, I, I do think that the placement of the drywells really has to be looked at, and I have a concern about the overflow pumps. It's great for that resident, that the water is being pumped out of their driveway or out of their basement to a drywall, but if that drywall is on that side of the house, which is close to 94 Lee, that could be problematic for 94 Lee. So I think it has to be looked at, that it's got to go all the way in the back, or all the way in the front, where it's got no chance to seep down to 94 Lee. And, you know, that's all I have tonight, because the other things are not appropriate. So I, I do appreciate your, your letting me speak tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I just make one comment? As you know, Joe is reviewing the stormwater management plan for the subdivision. He will also review the stormwater management plans for each individual home, and I will make sure that he attends the meetings as well, so that he can, not only can the applicant's engineer address some of those concerns, he can address those concerns as well.
And, and by the way, I, I was being a little facetious earlier when I, when I asked the engineer about Paul, about the 100-year storms, because up until five years ago or so, maybe, maybe even more recently, the town simply required a 50-year storm. But it seemed like 50 years, how that is defined, you know, unfortunately, with the recent climate awareness, perhaps, certainly, 100-year storms are, seem to occur more frequently than every 100 years, but that is the standard that the town applies, that it now applies to any, any new construction. And certainly, yeah.
And it used to also be net increase based compared to existing conditions. Now, if you demolish, it's like a clean slate, so it, it is something the town keeps taking very seriously, and we keep kind of improving upon the requirements.
Yeah, and, and I do appreciate Mr. Telesco's comments about any history, because that is often something that you want to find out beforehand. Are there, are there any issues? Have there ever been any issues in this area? Not, not that that necessarily changes the fact that we have an engineer retained by the town, Mr. Tramelli, who is looking into this very issue on behalf of this board and on behalf of the general public. And so we will, we will get an honest assessment as to the propriety of the, the stormwater management plan, and the initial feedback seems to be that it will work.
And typically, on properties like this, with new structures going up, and then putting two homes on it, those systems would probably be to the front, it wouldn't be coming to the side yard. I haven't seen, you know, the developer plan yet, but just by looking at what's there, the side yards are much smaller, they'd be bringing the Coltechs out to probably the front or the rear, so it wouldn't be encroaching onto your side.
Okay.
Just one...
Sure.
...comment just about the plan. We did propose to put the overflow, the sump pump, from the footing drains to the high side of the property, further away from...
Is that towards the left of the property?
Towards the left of each of the houses, so that's where the front yard is, so further...
When, when you say a sump pump, you're talking about having one inside of the house? Because you've mentioned, you meant, mentioned footing drains. So now you're taking water that's outside, bringing it into, introducing it to the inside, inside the envelope, right? Which is not really ideal, and then you're pumping it to a Coltech?
Right. I mean, footing drains aren't groundwater.
Right, correct.
So outside, inside, it's all...
Ideally, we want them to go to daylight, and, and it's going away from the property, but...
We'll, we'll need you to be at the microphone for the stenographer. You can carry it around with you, if you like.
But, I, I, yeah, so the footing drains are taking that water, bringing it into a sump system, it's inside, that's pumped to a Coltech.
Right.
And that's retention, and then it's distributing in the ground.
Infiltrating into the ground, back into, back into the ground.
But those systems would probably be in, in the front or back. You said on the high side?
Right now, we're proposing them on the high side of the front yards, so on the left side of the front yards.
But in the front, right.
Just because it's a closer, closer shot to the...
I mean, what was happening before is they had drains that were going, were sheet-flowing across the property, and, and down to the neighbor.
Downhill, right.
Whereas now, it's going to be on the ground, that's the way the systems work. It's, it's a little different.
Yep.
Okay.
Okay. I think we had another member of the public wanted to make a comment, is that...
Yep.
I live, my wife and I live at 94 Lee Avenue. We've lived there since 1965. I have a bit of a hearing problem, so I'm not sure what I'm able to make comments on, or what I'm not able to make comments on, but I would like to make one comment, a general comment, if I may, if I may. When we bought this house in 1965, we bought it for a couple of reasons. One reason was because it was in Eastchester. My wife is a native of, of Eastchester, and I thought Eastchester was the perfect small town, small town. I loved it, okay? Secondary reason was, we had some space on one side of our house, okay? Now, if this project goes through, that space is going to be gone. So, I don't know, my thought of this lovely, small town of Eastchester, I, I don't know whether I'm still going to have that feeling or not. I, I had to make the, I had to bring that out, I'm sorry. Whether I'm off the subject or not, I had to bring that out, because I am totally opposed of two houses on that lot. I do not have any problem with one house. I am... I do not have any problem with one house. I am totally opposed to two houses. As far as I'm concerned, it does nothing for the neighborhood. It brings no improvement. It doesn't beautify the neighborhood. It doesn't do anything. What does it do? It brings a profit to whoever is in charge of that. That's what it does. Profit motive. And it disgusts me. I'm telling you, it disgusts me. That's all I have to say.
Thank you.
So you can't just, you can't just say things. You have to be asked to be recognized by the chair.
Yeah, but you can speak now.
I'd like to reiterate our main concern is safety and miscommunications. The builders never communicate with us, never. They don't care the neighbors. That's all I want to say.
Can I just want to make one comment about the communication? Is that the neighbors within a 200-foot radius, including residents in Scarsdale, were notified at the public hearing? And I just want to make clear that this is the process for communication with builders. So it would not be typical, unless there are unusual circumstances, for a builder to come and knock on your door because this is the form for this kind of communication. And so far, so far, neighbors have been notified that the builder intends to seek subdivision approval. This is an opportunity to discuss and express concerns. If subdivision approval is granted, then he'll submit an application showing the proposed homes. This is an opportunity, that will be an opportunity for residents to discuss those. So I just wanted to point out that this is sort of the means for communication. And I did forward your concerns about, not today with regard to the safety, which I can discuss with, will discuss today with the builder, but with regard to the driveways. And I do think when I talked to the builder about the alignment of the driveways, they actually were looking to try to accommodate that to the extent that they could. I don't know how successful they were because there's grading issues and drainage issues and other issues. But they did take that concern seriously, so.
Yep. And if I can comment very generally, I know that whenever we're faced with an application for a subdivision, and it is invariably because there is an oversized property and the owner of that oversized property wants to, as is their right, to develop that property, you know, within the constraints of the size of the property and whatever zone they're in. And without fail, the neighbors nearest to the property are very disappointed with, you know, the overcrowding, I guess, is the perception. I can tell you, you know, although it didn't involve a subdivision, a few years back, the house next door to mine was, you know, it was bought by a builder and they tore down all the trees and put all new systems in. And, you know, it wasn't really much I could do because it didn't fall into something that even came before this board. But, you know, it turns out the builders did build responsibly. You know, I ended up with new neighbors who were quite nice and who I enjoy speaking with on a regular basis. A young family came in, so I understand the reluctance, particularly to give up space. You know, open space, there isn't a lot of it left in this town. I've been a very longtime resident of this town myself. But homeowner or property owners do also have rights to develop their property within the constraints of the building code, so.
We have one more.
Do you have another?
Good evening. We are the resident...
Could you give your name and address for the record?
Yes. We are the residents of 101 Lee Avenue. My name is Jalu Zhou. And we have similar concern of safety if the design and planning change the driveway to different from the current one. So we think it's for the public safety, sake of public safety, to keep the current, like, setting, not quite change it significantly. Yes, this is my concern.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments from the public? Okay. Mr. Chen was holding up a sign that said "Object," or "object." I couldn't really tell. Yes, Mr. Chen. Yes.
I'd like to say we are not here objection for objection. We really come here for communications. Have so many concerns, safety concerns, the case, the driveway, even the soil, the waters. I do feel the builders should address that before even this gets approved. That's all I have to say. Thanks, appreciate it.
Well, I can assure you that this board takes its job very seriously. And I also would think that the owner and, you know, the engineer, the architect, the builders, everyone has an incentive to do this job right. Nobody wants any problems. But that said, does the applicant have any comments in response to what we've heard? Are there any more comments from the public?
If no one else in the public, I have one more comment I'd like to make.
Okay, I think we're, we can probably close the public hearing?
I would just wait until all the comments. One of the safety issues that I think the neighbors were concerned about was, and this is kind of interesting, is that, although they didn't articulate it specifically, but this is what I understand, is that, interestingly, for residential construction, there's no New York State code requirement or local code requirement that a site be fenced. So there is an open construction site. Sometimes there are open foundations. There are some builders that choose to install construction fencing around sites. Some builders choose not to. We rarely if ever have incidents as a result. But I understand neighbors that have young children, especially that they, you know, you can say you're not supposed to trespass on properties, but that's difficult to say to a seven-year-old.
That's an open invitation to trespass.
So what I was going to say is, you know, that's something that the planning board could impose as a condition of an approval or that the builder could agree to put up the temporary construction fencing to secure a site so that neighbors can at least, when he's building the homes or demolishing the homes, see that there's some kind of barricade for children, et cetera. And the interesting thing is that's hard to make as a condition of subdivision approval because I'm not quite sure when he would intend to demolish something. But I think if we can at least have an agreement from the builder to put security fencing up. So I don't...
Well, actually, if you go down to the corner of Leewood and Dale Road, you'll see basically a commercial job going up. And I happen to be a commercial builder in Manhattan. And we can't build anything without having what we call controlled access. And basically, you know, it's always a fence, it's a sidewalk bridge, it's overhead protection. So I think that's something that's of major concern to the neighbors. And I think that we could certainly make that a stipulation.
And I don't think it's too onerous for the builders.
Basically, united fence, you could just put a chain link fence around the whole thing and no one could access it and you guys can get in and out. It makes everything safe. Yeah, it's a wonderful idea.
And a condition of demolition.
And like I say, if you go to Leewood and Dale, you'll see a fence around Suez Water Plant, so.
So I think, as Louis had indicated, that could be a condition of any demolition. So as soon as they start constructing demo and/or construction. And a lot of builders do that under any circumstances, but we don't require it and can't require it.
Just like I said, didn't realize that in the town, that wasn't...
It is for commercial, but not for residential.
We can't build anything without having protection around the whole thing, so.
Yep.
Would that be an appropriate condition for subdivision?
Not this, no.
Yeah, until we have a demolition permit.
At this point, it's kind of gotta be an agreement, which I feel comfortable imposing. The thing with making it a condition of subdivision approval is that in order to have two building lots, he needs to file the subdivision plat, which means it's already approved. It's kind of hard to enforce. It's just, I think it can be, we can all agree it will be a condition of a demolition permit. And because that's when the whole process would get started. And you're okay with that, correct? Thank you.
Good. Right. Margaret, do you have anything more at this point?
No, so if you're just going to vote at this point, you would close the public hearing and then...
Did the applicant have any, yeah, did you want to comment on anything you heard from the public? Yeah.
Hello, the board. Thank you for hearing my case here. My name is Emilio Di Matteo. I've been building houses all over Westchester for the past 20, 30 years. And all our sites to the neighbors are being, we're fencing all our sites. And we take neighborhoods, we sweep the streets, we make sure everything's clean. You know, we're coming in there with heavy machines and excavators. And we leave the site clean every day. And we do plan to build the homes simultaneously also. So the safety is our biggest concern. You know, I have kids myself. And I definitely don't want kids walking around in a job site that could be dangerous. If you have any questions, I could answer any other questions you might have.
Do you know, if you're building them simultaneously, assuming you get approvals, well, once you get your building permit, say, how long do you anticipate the construction process for both homes would last?
I would say about a year.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Any other questions from this board?
No, no questions.
I think under the circumstances, I'm prepared to move ahead with the subdivision. I think we, there would be two, potentially two votes that we'd have to take, right? The first one...
The first one is you need to adopt a neg dec?
Yes, so that's...
Are we still have a public hearing to close?
Oh, yes, 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 yes. I make a motion to close the public hearing on application 21-29, 102 Lee Avenue subdivision.
Second.
Oh, in favor?
Aye.
All right, and I also make a motion to adopt a negative declaration, a neg dec for application 21-29, 102 Lee Avenue subdivision.
Second.
Oh, in favor?
Aye.
All right, and we also then have to take a vote. And I move to approve the sketch plan, the preliminary plat, and the final plat for the subdivision at 102 Lee Avenue, application 21-29.
Second.
Oh, in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and as I mentioned before, there will be an opportunity to comment on, once the applicant comes forward with a proposal to, a more detailed proposal to build two homes on this property, which I understand is forthcoming.
Yeah, I believe that they are on the agenda, plan to be on the agenda for the November 4th, I believe it is, ARB meeting.
Okay, that's a week from today.
And neighbors will have been notified. Did you receive a notification? Those are required to be postmarked no less than five days prior to the meeting, so you should receive a notification. Those are also, and the application will be, there's always a link to the agenda for the application.
Okay. Very good. Thank you. The public hearing's closed.
Kevin, if you'd like, you could call me.
An email in.
All right, the next application is application 21-30, which is the Duncan location at 1 Michael Frey Drive.
Good evening, members of the board. My name is Delira Floresca. I'm with GK&amp;A Architects. I'm a project manager. And today I would like to present the proposed improvements for the facade at 38 Mill Road. I'm going to start from the bottom up. At the existing storefront, we will be painting the metal panels that are currently there. They're like a purplish-brownish color. We'll be painting them charcoal. We will be removing the awning that is there. And it's going to expose existing metal panels, which will also be painted in the charcoal color. We will be replacing a band, a light band, that is right above the existing awning with a orange band that will have recessed lights on the underside. Right now, there are fluorescent lights. The new lights will be LED lights. Above that, we will have a aluminum, a decorative aluminum backer board, which is composed of pink and white stripes. And then in between, you'll have a wood grain print. It's not real wood. It's just the texture of the wood will be printed on an aluminum backer and it'll give the illusion of like a fiber cement board that's painted in a wood color. It's a custom-made piece that looks like natural wood. In the middle of the facade, you have the Duncan sign, which will be non-illuminated. And above that, you'll have new gooseneck lights that will substitute whatever's there right now. The Duncan sign will be smaller because it's no longer Dunkin' Donuts. It's just the Duncan. And the goosenecks, since I believe there are like five goosenecks there right now, we'll be removing all of them and replacing them with three new goosenecks. Above the aluminum backer board, we will have a, we will repaint the existing coping that's there with the charcoal color. Both the coping and the orange band will extend over to the liquor store to kind of give it continuity. And it'll also turn the corner a bit where that overhang is at the existing liquor store. At the Duncan, right now, there's one wall pack light right in the middle. We'll be removing that and putting two to either side just to shine on the sidewalk for safety purposes. At the previous Architectural Review Board meeting, the board had asked us as a condition of approval, or I guess as a suggestion, to update the existing trash cans that are there. And we provided a spec sheet for that. And in addition to that, on the right side of the facade, we were asked to just pull in all the finishes so they're contained within the facade and don't go into the adjacent property. So we also made those modifications to the drawings. If you have any questions, I have finishes here as well, if you'd like to see the colors.
Okay, now, I have a question about the Mill Road wines and liquors. The orange band that's going across with, it's gonna have LED lighting underneath it?
Underneath it, yes.
And that's gonna go all the way across on both the Duncan property, the Duncan store as well as the liquor store?
Yes.
Okay, but the application is with respect to only the Duncan or Dunkin' Donuts, I believe it says now. I'm a little upset with the loss of donuts because Duncan reminds me of...
He doesn't drink donuts.
Duncan reminds me, it's always the backdrop of Boston Red Sox press conferences. And I'm not a Red Sox fan.
Okay.
So the one good thing about Dunkin' Donuts is it had donuts in it. You're taking that away.
We still have the donuts.
I'm imagining I can't... But I'm imagining I can't force the company, the corporation, to do U-turn on this, so I'm going to have to reluctantly swallow my pride and agree to this Duncan.
The application includes the band in front of the liquor store.
It does?
Yes, so it's all part of the same application. And it's just that that, 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 that building is part of the same building, and then when you turn the corner, there's like orange detail.
Is that, they're going to do that little return there on the, past the door of the liquor store? Is that what they're showing here in that detail?
Yes.
All the way to the left.
Making that little return.
Right.
If I can ask, is, what, why is this before the planning board? I thought this is more of a signage and/or ARB issue.
It's kind of construction.
Well, it's, anything before the ARB automatically comes before the planning board. And it, even though it's primarily signage, they're proposing pretty significant changes to that facade, and the, and so it typically, signage goes before the signage committee, and that would be after it's gone to the ARB and the planning board. This time, because the chair of the sign committee is also the chair of the ARB, and because we're proposing some bright colors and, you know, some facade improvements, we allowed it to have preliminary review with the sign committee, then it went to the ARB. Yeah, it's just that even though it appears kind of simple, it's, it's a whole lot of new materials, they're bright colors, it's, you know...
Yeah. Brightness is definitely welcome. I think it definitely needs lighting.
Well, and the fact that the sign committee and the ARB basically had only modest comments, and I will say the applicant was very responsive to both the sign committee's comments and the ARB's comments.
I'm not so sure. Totally crazy about the orange stripe running underneath the other building, but I guess it'll grow on us, but the lighting certainly...
Do you, do you have the sample of the wood panel?
Pardon me?
Do you have a sample of the aluminum panel with wood grain?
I have the colors, not the actual material.
Okay, that's fine.
The original material is more, the brand uses both that and also fiber cement board that's colored to look like wood. I have that sample with me today.
Can you show them all of the samples that you have?
So essentially, it's going to look like wood boards?
Yes, correct.
Okay.
I think the...
It's like hardy, right?
Well, it's not hardy, but it's like it.
I think the orange, the orange band, the liquor store stands out more because the roof isn't rendered as well.
Excuse me?
That orange band stands out at the liquor store because the roof isn't rendered. You know what I'm saying? So I think it makes it pop a little bit more.
It just, it struck me when I saw it, it just, it looked a little off balance, but like I say, the lighting and that band is certainly welcome.
Yeah, the liquor store has wood shingle.
Yeah, yeah.
You popped it up there, you have both buildings.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So does Duncan.
You see, so it's brown wood shingle.
Okay.
And then it's going to transition to...
So the color, it's a coloration difference, yeah.
Yeah, because it seemed like it was sticking out, I saw it coming white.
What other comments did the Architectural Review Board have in terms of proposed enhancements to the project? Recommendations?
Just the two that she mentioned about the trash cans and ending it.
And do we have, do we have anything further on those trash cans?
Yes.
I think there was a spec.
I have a copy of this spec sheet.
Yeah, so it's a typical commercial.
Okay.
Yeah, no lighting. Very nice.
And are these, are these garbage cans, are they permanent? Are they going to be movable? Are they, is there a particular location? I don't, yeah.
So we'll locate them where the existing ones are. They're not as heavy, like, they can be moved, but we will put them wherever the existing ones are.
Okay.
And we're proposing them in black.
Because I think the existing ones have moved around over time, if I'm not mistaken.
These are 24 pounds.
Okay.
Yeah. But I'm sure there's a way to anchor them.
See what we get.
Yeah. Yeah, the one that's there now needs to be replaced.
Oh, yeah, definitely. All right. Well, I think we've asked whatever questions. Let's open the public hearing. Make a motion to open the public hearing for application 21-30 Duncan, 1 Michael Frey Drive.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Don't see anyone here to comment on that, so I'm going to make a motion to close the public hearing, application 21-30.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Yeah, I have no comments.
We're good. Yep, I make a motion...
Nice fresh slate, it's good.
Yeah, I make a motion to approve application 21-30 Duncan, 1 Michael Frey Drive.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Good luck.
All right. And the third and final application of the evening, application 21-31 to Eastway.
Do you need your samples back?
Oh, yes.
Do you want your samples back?
No, 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 we insist.
Yeah.
Like Tony Orlando, remember? Elvis in his prime.
Something new.
Good evening. My name is John Yanecito. I'm an architect, and I'm representing Mr. and Mrs. Michael McGlinn this evening, and Michael's with me tonight. We are proposing additions and alterations to the existing single-family residence located at 2 Eastway. The proposed scope of work will include a one-story garage addition with a breezeway at the rear and side yard of the existing property, and we're also proposing to reconfigure the existing circular drive to provide access to the garage. Here is a rendering of the proposed garage, which sits here, and the proposed roof of the, of the new garage will be hip roofs and gables to match the details of the existing residence. On the materials, the wall surfaces will be a stucco finished, colored to match existing. The roof will be slate to match existing. The windows will be vinyl clad in a sand tone finish to match existing. The gutters will be copper to match existing. The overhead doors will be a wood, painted wood to match existing, to match the existing trim work. And I believe that's it. And the trim work will be, will be painted to match the existing trim work also. So all the materials will match existing. The project was presented to the Architectural Review Board on October 7th, and it was approved with two recommendations. The first was to verify the size of the trim boards and the rake boards, just to make sure that what we're proposing on the new garage will match. So I went over there. We previously had them at five and a half inches, the existing were eight, so I did modify that on the exterior elevations, bumped them up to eight inches. And the second recommendation was to show the exterior lighting. So on the proposed elevations, I showed the existing light fixture at the front door, which is here, and then we're going to add a couple of light fixtures on either side of the overhead doors, and then there'll be downlights within the breezeway that connects it back to the rear porch. Thank you for your time, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Terrific.
Beautiful.
Thank you.
Yeah. Yeah, I live not too far from this, from your, from your home, and I see it on a daily basis. It's already beautiful, but definitely a nice improvement.
So phase one of this, we did, the garages were in the back of the house, they had a real long driveway that wrapped around, and so we actually closed the, enclosed the existing garage doors and raised the grade to eliminate that long driveway, and it's given them a beautiful backyard.
Backyard.
So now we're going to put the garage towards the side in front.
Yeah. And what's the net effect on the impervious surface?
So we're actually decreasing the impervious surface by 14 square feet. Not much, but it's a small decrease, but we're also adding new drywells for the entire roof of the garage, plus the new driveway.
Right.
So even though we're decreasing the impervious, we are adding five drywells to the project.
Right. Terrific. Not much to question.
Yeah, not much, yes. No comments. It kind of speaks for itself. Yeah, it looks great.
But that said...
Practice my singing for the next one.
Yeah, please, please, can you do tie a yellow ribbon? That would be good.
And they reviewed this, right? I mean, of course, the engineer...
No, so for additions and alterations, we have an architect that does our plan review, so as part of the building permit process, we do that. Joe does new construction or very large projects, yeah.
Okay. All right. Let's open the public hearing. Make a motion to open the public hearing for application 21-31 to Eastway.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone here to comment on 2 Eastway? Don't see anyone. Make a motion to close the public hearing on application 21-31 to Eastway.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I don't have any further comments. I think it looks like a fantastic job.
Yeah.
I make a motion to approve application 21-31 to Eastway.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Good luck, guys. Very nice, beautiful.
Yep, good luck. All right. And with that, I make a motion to close the Town of Eastchester Planning Board hearing of Thursday, October 28th, 2021.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Good luck, guys.
Next one.